We'll call the June 2, 2025, school committee meeting to order. Tonight, we have a first item of business. We have a special item to recognize the retirees of Hingham Public Schools tonight. It's my privilege to take a moment to honor and celebrate the invaluable contribution of Hingham Public Schools retiring staff. Their dedication and commitment have shaped the lives of countless students and have left a lasting impact on our community. We are deeply grateful for their years of service and the positive influence that they've had in the classroom and beyond. And on behalf of the committee, I extend our heartfelt thanks and best wishes for this chapter in their lives. So, thank you very much.
Well, I have the pleasure this evening of introducing each of our educators who's retiring. And as I shared with our educators at the beginning of the year at convocation, I'm from a family of educators, so I think it's incredibly important to honor and elevate our educators and really make sure that the whole community is thanking them for the really terrific work that they do. And I have worked very closely with our retirees this evening, so again, hope to put a personal touch on our thanks. And so, wanted to begin, I'm going to go by order of years of service. So, I'm going to begin with Paula Flanagan, who is our retiring HHS chemistry teacher, who will be retiring after 31 years in the district. And in addition to her work in the Science Department, we also recognize Paula's contributions as a founding advisor of the thriving HHS robotics team. The Team 5000 Hammerheads participated in tournaments across the state, including the state tournament. And Mrs. Flanagan and her husband Jim have gone above and beyond to build and sustain the robotics program, which provides authentic, hands-on learning experiences for high school students. And so grateful to Paula, who I worked with as a colleague in the Science Department. And again, very grateful for all of her work and for husband Jim's work in supporting that robotics program. So, thank you, Paula. Okay, next up, we have Dr. Paul Palowski from the HHS newly rebranded Technology Engineering Program, formerly known as the Industrial Technology Program. He's kind of like Pit Prince. He kind of changed his title midstream. And so, he will be retiring after 28 years in the district. In addition to teaching technology engineering classes at the high school, Dr. Palowski also runs the district's Traces Program, which provides off-site work and training experience for high school students in construction technology. Paul Palowski has led students in a number of community projects that apply student construction skills for the betterment of the community. And additionally, Paul has served as the department coordinator and mentor for the Technology Engineering Industrial Technology Department. And again, I've worked very closely with Paul on a number of projects during my time as Science Director and incredibly grateful for his service and the very strong department that he's leaving in very good hands. So, thank you, Paul. Next up this evening, we honor Carolyn Bixby, who I've also had the honor of working closely with. Carolyn was a grade three teacher at Foster, and she will be retiring after 23 years in the district. Carolyn was widely known as an educator who saw her students as individuals, always seeking to support them and honor their uniqueness. Mrs. Bixby has a passion for science, hence my connection with her, and loved teaching her third graders just how their brains work. She was incredibly dedicated to her students, and we deeply appreciate her commitment to the children of Foster School. Thank you, Carolyn. Next up, we celebrate my colleague June Gustafson, who taught grades six social studies at the middle school, and she will be retiring after 21 years in the district. June's passion for social studies translated into many hands-on learning experiences for grade six students. And in fact, in 2004, June was recognized by the Massachusetts Council for Social Studies. Was that 2024? Sorry. That 2004, 2024 typo. June was recognized by the Massachusetts Council for the social studies and was honored with the William Spratt Award for Excellence in Teaching: Middle School Social Studies. And June additionally has served in a variety of union leadership roles, including serving as the HEA president. And we're grateful for June for all of her service to the district. We had two educators who were not able to join this evening, and I would like to just share briefly their bio. Mary Beth Lally, our HMS Adjustment Counselor, will be retiring after 24 years in the district. Mary Beth's compassion and caring has provided a steady presence for students throughout their middle school years. Beth has not only worked to increase the capacity and skills of her students individually, but has also advocated for broader mental health supports throughout her career in the Hingham Public Schools. Her understanding of emotional wellness and the school environment has helped an untold number of students navigate that at times turbulent middle school years. I'm grateful to Mary Beth. Next up, we'd like to congratulate Kathleen Jennings, who was officially hired as a full-time permanent teacher for East School in Hingham in 2011, but had actually been active in the district in a variety of roles prior to that hire date. Kathy served as a sub for 12 years in the district, including long-term subpositions, and also taught in our Extended School Year Program, which is also known as ESY. Kathy is described by her peers as a wonderful teammate who is very invested in the success of her students, and she is known to quietly leave a card or a banana bread if her teammates needed support. So Kathy's looking forward to traveling and spending more time with her family. So again, though Mary Beth and Kathleen were not able to join us this evening, wanted to make sure that we honored them. And this year, for the first time, in addition to recognizing our Unit A members, our educators, we did also want to acknowledge members of Unit B and Unit C, our paraeducators and custodians, who also unfortunately could not join us this evening, but wanted to share a bit about their bio and how they've contributed to the Hingham Public Schools. And so I first like to acknowledge Tony Barbuto, who has worked as a paraeducator at South School since 2016, and previously worked as a paraeducator at both East and Plymouth River School. Her positive outlook and never-ending dedication and commitment to her students is inspiring to all around her. Mrs. Barbuto will also hold a special place in the heart of the South Village, East, and Plymouth River Schools. I'd also like to recognize Maria Brady, who worked as a paraeducator at South School since 2001, and most recently, working in kindergarten. In addition to her incredible work with South School students during the school day, she went above and beyond to support Metco students before school, as well as work with our students after school with the Kids in Action Program. Her wonderful sense of humor, kind-hearted nature, and warm presence will leave a lasting impression. And finally, wanted to acknowledge a former colleague of mine, Tony Tarikowski, who actually started his career in Hingham when I did, way back at the dawn of time. And he was the custodian in my very first classroom and spent a lot of time chatting with him about his family. And so, very grateful to Tony for all of his years of service as a custodian, first at the middle school, and then more recently, he's been working at South School as a lead custodian. Tony was a fixture at middle school and South School events and was an integral part of both of those school communities. So again, wanted to acknowledge all of our educators and staff retiring this year, and Jen Benham and the school committee would like to make a presentation to each of you. Put the hand out? If we could ask the retirees to come on up?
So we have item three, which is approval of minutes. We have minutes from May 19, and if anyone would like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 19, 2025.
Is there any second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion? Nope, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, all right. Thank you very much. We will, oops. Okay. Moving on, this is the portion of the meeting where we have set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to take, any questions that are not, that are, excuse me. Let me start over. Our practice is to take questions and comments during the discussion of new business items on the agenda. If your question is unrelated to those items, please raise your hand now, and I will be happy to recognize you. If there's anyone online, we will do the same, and I will read a brief statement if there's anyone who has any questions or comments of items that are not related to the agenda. I do not see anyone. So we will move on to item five, which is the superintendent's report, and I will pass it over to Katie.
Thank you. Well, we have a longer-than-usual superintendent's report with so much happening in the district at this time of year as we close out the school year. I first wanted to acknowledge high school senior Ben Cavell Smith, who was recently selected to represent Massachusetts at the 16th Annual Jimmy Awards, which is a very prestigious national showcase for the top high school music theater performers. And he will actually perform on Broadway at the Minskoff Theater, so a real thrill for a performing artist. And so Ben earned this honor after being named Best Musical Theater Male Actor in Massachusetts for his standout role as Orpheus in Hadestown, which was directed by Mo Fish and Christopher Landis. His achievement highlights the strength of Hingham High's Performing Arts Program, and we look forward to being able to livestream Ben's Broadway performance on June 23rd. So I'll certainly let the school committee know once I have access to that live link, so you could check that out. This week, we will be dedicating the Foster School Stage. As you recall, the school committee last March approved the naming of the Foster School Stage in honor of HHS alum Anna Quinn Livin. Anna was a passionate and talented member of the Hingham High School Drama Club, known for her work behind the scenes in stage production, and her dreams of designing sets for Broadway before tragically passing in 2020. The idea to name the new stage at Foster School in her honor came from a desire to celebrate her deep love for the theater, ensure that her legacy lives on in a space that she would have cherished. So again, grateful to the school committee for approving that, and we look forward to that dedication this week. We've had a flurry of exciting state championship activity over the course of the past few weeks, and would like to congratulate the high school girls' crew team, who again, won the state title this past Sunday at the MSPRA Spring Championship in Fall River. And we're grateful to the HBD escort, who escorted the team up Main Street, and the community lined the street to welcome them home. And we'd also like to congratulate the high school sailing team, who placed second in the state championship at MIT. This coming week, we have a flurry of tournament play going on. This evening, we have girls softball. Tomorrow, boys and girls tennis. And boys and girls lacrosse will play in the state tournament on Wednesday. This week, and I had the pleasure of catching some of the tournament play for our boys and girls lacrosse team in the first round, and also got to see the baseball team play. Additionally, Callie Kreen will represent the girls' golf team at the state golf tournament, and we wish, best wishes to all of the participants in our athletics program. Earlier this month, high school seniors participated in what's now an annual tradition of our annual Credit for Life Fair, which is a personal finance simulation in which students make real-world budgets that incorporate future planning related to student loans, career choices, housing, transportation, and other factors. So very grateful to business teacher Joe Tarantello and the number of community volunteers who contributed to this innovative and impactful experience for our seniors, making sure that we're ready to send them out into the world to make good choices. Over the course of the next few weeks, we'll have a number of civics activities going on in our curriculum. So next week, I look forward, and I think several members of our committee will be there as well, to joining our students at Old Ship Church for the annual Grade Three Mocktown Meeting. Students have been diligently preparing their position statements on a variety of topics of local relevance, and will present their viewpoints in front of their peers, family members, and town officials. In a similar vein, our grade eight students will be meeting with community experts this week, including some members of the school committee again, who will assist students in their research for the grade eight civics projects. Many thanks to the educators and volunteers who've supported students in preparing for these authentic learning experiences. And then finally, we are in the Class of 2025 Countdown. I know that will personally impact a few members of our school committee. And so this week, we have our senior awards nights. We have the cherished tradition of our seniors visiting their elementary schools. I know that Mr. Lamoth and Ms. Boning here this evening are looking forward to that. Of course, the senior prom on Thursday, and this will all lead up to graduation festivities on Saturday. I personally am very sad to miss this year's graduation due to a family wedding that is out of state, but do want to send my best wishes to our graduates. And at this time, I would also like to acknowledge the generosity of the broader community in sponsoring a number of scholarships for our graduating seniors. This year, over $400,000 of scholarships will be awarded by the high school scholarship committee in support of the varied future paths of our graduates, and an additional $70,000 in scholarships will be awarded by private and outside organizations. So again, very grateful to the generosity of our community. And that's a wrap.
That's a lot, thank you very much. That Credit for Life is a, that's great.
It really is terrific.
Grateful for that grant that we have. So moving on to item six, which is communications. Any communications received by this superintendent? Nope. Student communications, I think we're past. No more student communications. Other communications from the committee? Does anyone have any communications? Nope. I've received a couple of communications just related to the bus fee from a few parents, just expressing their views on, and concern on the cost of the bus fee. And just, they had asked that I just share that with the rest of the committee, so just wanted you to be aware of that. Next item we have up is the new business. So 8.1 is to discuss a trip to Nashville for Hingham High School music students in March of 2026. And act as appropriate. And I see Brian Sinckata on the call this evening, so we'll ask Brian to unmute if he'd like to share any information about this now traditional trip to Nashville. So the high school music department runs some of their field trips on a cycle, and so Nashville is now one of the trips that is, I think, now a tradition in our cycle.
Hi there, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can, thanks, Brian.
Perfect, no problem. As Katie mentioned, this is, this will be our third trip to Nashville over the past decade or so. I would argue, I think Phaedra would as well, this is our favorite trip to take for a music group to travel. You know, this is a place that is hyper-focused on a really specific form of music, but it's really great for the kids to see sort of all of country music in one place, and the items on the itinerary kind of highlight that. We'll be at the Grand Ole Opry for both a classic country show and for something more contemporary, sort of like a spotlight new artist show. We'll see the Ryman Auditorium, which is the cathedral of country music. It's a beautiful old space. We'll travel to RCA Studio B, where Elvis recorded some of his early hits. We can sit at his piano, as I've done before on previous trips. It's sort of like a life-changing experience. We'll be at the Johnny Cash Museum, exploring the honky-tonks down Broadway, and then we'll get some classical music as well. At the Nashville Symphony, they'll be performing "Holes to the Planets," which is a sort of an iconic orchestral work. There's terrific food, and then we also do unconventional stop on a music trip as we go to Cumberland Caverns, which is kind of a real outdoorsy, rugged experience for our violinists, et cetera, but it's a great sort of wrap-up to the trip. Three nights there, the last weekend of March, and it's about $2,000. And as I mentioned, it's a real favorite of ours, and for a music student, one of the best places you can go to experience all that a very specific genre has to offer.
Great. Thank you very much, Brian. Sounds like a great trip. Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
Just a quick clarification, Katie. I noticed this is in the end of March, so I'm assuming that it's not intersecting with MCAS or?
Correct, thank you.
Okay. And Brian, I cannot guarantee you will not have any hospital visits, but I hope that you will not have any emergency room visits on this trip, and all just good fun.
Now I have all the experience, I'm ready to go. I hope that happens.
I'm glad I could help.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Nope? Okay, I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the proposed field trip for the HHS Music Department to Nashville, Tennessee, from Thursday, March 26 through Sunday, March 29, 2026.
I will second. Any more discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful trip. All right, moving on to 8.2, which is proposed business and HR office role restructuring. Act as appropriate.
Thank you. So as previously shared during our budget season, the HPS Central Office Team has been examining our current staffing structures at Central Office to make most efficient use of the relatively lean staffing that we have currently supporting those central office functions. And so this evening, I'm going to propose a budget-neutral shift that should help our efficiency and impact. So one identified central office efficiency includes reallocation of one FTE, the current HR Administrative Assistant position, in order to create a new payroll specialist position. The payroll specialist will report to the existing payroll supervisor and will assist in the accurate and timely processing of payroll for all school district employees. Additionally, the existing benefits payroll position will be retitled as a Human Resource Generalist. The newly-retired HR generalist will report to the Human Resources Coordinator and will support all aspects of HR and benefits administration. So again, a simple reallocation of the human resources that we have to help us to increase our efficiency.
Like I said, it is budget-neutral.
It is budget-neutral, okay.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
More of a comment, just to underscore the point in there, that our central office is very lean compared to our peer districts. And you did a good job, I think, communicating that to the community during budget season, but just to say it again, because I think it's important. And I just appreciate everyone's creativity with making the most of the people we do have.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. Both Ayesha Apung, our business director, and Mary Ann Foley, our HR director, have really been working this year to look deeply at our processes, whether it be staffing or some of the software that we use. And so again, hope to continue to refine and be more efficient. So thank you for acknowledging that.
What else? Questions? Need to vote on this? Do we, yes, vote on that? All right, you want a motion?
Yes, please. All right. I will make a motion to approve the proposed business and human resource office restructuring, which is budget-neutral, to provide the most impact for limited resources that we have.
I will second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, all right, great. Thank you very much. Okay. Next up is South Shore Educational Collaborative Update.
Correct, yes. So as you recall, earlier this spring, you did vote to reappoint me to the South Shore Educational Collaborative Board, of which the Hingham Public Schools is a member. And as part of my responsibility as a board member is to report back to the school committee some of the happenings at the collaborative and some of the services that we take advantage of. And so, wanted to just briefly overview some of the programming that our students have access to at the collaborative. And I did include in the packet this evening for your review, the current tuition rates of each of the programs, and also included, from the business manager at the South Shore Educational Collaborative, he provided an overview of current levels of enrollment overall in the program. And so currently, the SSE programming is tailored to students with a wide range of needs. One program is the Community School, a day school serving students ages three to 21 with severe medical disabilities, many of whom have very complex medical needs. The Mini School specializes in educating children with autism spectrum disorder, developmental delays, and language delays. The Quest Elementary Middle School is a small supportive therapeutic school that provides intensive educational clinical behavioral and remedial services for K to eight students. And then finally, the South Shore High School slash Careers High School, that used to be substantially different programs that now have been a bit merged together. Those two programs, the first provides a challenging academic environment in an inclusive therapeutic setting, whereas Careers High School, also with therapeutic program, provided a more collaborative and flexible environment that had more of an employment focus to it. In addition to those four core programs, as a member district of the collaborative, we also have access to a variety of consultations. And again, all of those rates are in the packet, and they can range from consults and also out-of-district reviews and so on. And so, for the 2026 school year, we anticipate that 12 of our Hingham students will participate in SSEC programming. And again, we may be choosing to partner with SSEC on other district supports as needed. So just wanted to give that update and overview, and happy to answer any questions about some of the resources in the packet about SSEC.
Is this, are all these schools on one site?
That, they have morphed and changed over the years. And so, at the current South Shore Collaborative campus, they do house some of the programs, but at various times over the past several years, they have rented space from various schools. So they have rented in Hall, they've rented in Abington, and as those districts' space needs have more often changed, the collaborative programming sometimes has rented different spaces, so.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
I just wanted to mention, my family has experience with some of the providers at the collaborative, and they do really excellent work there, so it's great. And I love the way this is laid out as far as the different programs. And I know CPAC had been asking for that information for a long, I don't know, in recent years, but in the past. And I'm wondering if this has been shared with them at all? Just, it's always, the collaborative is always kind of a mystery, you know, what they do over there, so.
Absolutely, and I'm happy to reshare out some of this information. And again, their programs have been refined somewhat over the years, and so even though information might have been shared, for example, I do think the merging of the South Shore High School and Careers High School, there'll be a lot of cross-pollination there, and so I think that's actually a positive and a benefit. So certainly can provide an update on how their programs have refined to meet district needs, so.
That's great. And my other question is, how much of a discount do we get in tuition for being a member?
Excellent question. And so if you take a look, one of the items in the packet shows you the school year tuition for member districts. And I can also, I think there's actually a second handout that I did not include in the packet that has the non-member rates, but we do get in some cases, a $10,000, $15,000 discount.
Okay, great, yeah, that's great, thanks.
And priority access to seats, which is a primary benefit of our membership, but we do get a discount.
Do most of Hingham students at the South Shore Collaborative attend there full-time? And like, do we, I know, do we use them for 45-day evaluations?
We do, thank you. That was the term I was looking, yes. We do use them for 45-day evaluations, but we do have many students that are there as their primary setting. Yeah, really terrific resource, and we have a number of other area districts who also are part of the collaborative. And again, those superintendents and I meet with Michael Loesch, the director, on a monthly basis, and really discuss the needs of each of our districts, so they can get that feedback and continue to refine their programming. And similarly, all of the areas' special education directors, they have a separate meeting with Michael and his team to provide that student services lens. So at the superintendent level, we do discuss the budget And similarly, all of the areas' special education directors, they have a separate meeting with Michael and his team to provide that student services lens. So at the superintendent level, we do discuss the budget and the facilities and so on and the programming, but the special education directors also really take a deep dive and provide feedback on the kinds of programs that districts will need.
How often do you meet? Is it quarterly?
Monthly.
Monthly, how long?
We do meet monthly. So, and they do provide these updates on a quarterly basis, and so I'm happy to share these out in the School Committee packets more regularly. And I can give maybe an annual robust update on their programming. But the information on enrollment, we get quarterly updates on any shifts in some of their available services. So happy to provide more regular updates on that.
That's great, good. Any update, good information? Does anyone else have anything else?
Could we get an explanation on all the acronyms at some point?
Absolutely, well...
I think I know some of them, but I don't want to waste everyone's time.
Absolutely. We are swimming in an alphabet soup in education of acronyms, so I'm happy to provide...
Yes.
Yeah, I think in, yes, yes.
Alright.
And we make new ones up all the time, too, so.
Just to keep it fresh.
Yep.
Not to confuse people.
Yes.
Alright, so moving on to 8.4, which is proposed elementary therapeutic program.
Yes, and so during budget season, and this dovetails nicely from the conversation about SSEC, during budget season, we had floated the idea of a pilot elementary therapeutic program. And the original model that we discussed during budget season would be to have the collaborative, the SSEC, rent space from Hingham and to host the collaborative program here on-site, at which we would have access to three spots for our Hingham students, and also the collaborative would be also inviting students in from other area districts. After further analysis of the finances of it, we actually would still be paying tuition for the students to attend that program even though it would be on our campus. We are now pivoting and considering building a very small pilot in district that's homegrown for next year. And so after our conversations with the SSEC Director, who came and toured Foster School and Plymouth River School, we are currently considering housing the potential pilot at Plymouth River. Plymouth River School is more accessible, where it is a single-level, somewhat more contained environment. And also, this will allow us to have a specialized program at each of our elementary schools. So currently, we have our RISE program at South School. We have, will have the Integrated Preschool next year at Foster. We have CLC and Lab Program at East. And so Plymouth River will now have as well a therapeutic, have a specialized program. So it will achieve some kind of parity between the schools in terms of caseloads. And additionally, because Plymouth River has a somewhat smaller enrollment than the other elementary schools, we would not put a strain on some of the service providers in that building. And so again, wanted to just update the committee on our pivot-in plans, and very grateful to Michael Loesch at SSEC for really partnering with us on some of those conversations. And so at this point, rather than renting the space to SSEC again, we would be looking to have a very small pilot of, a very small handful of students. And Greg LaMoth did join us this evening, if you had any questions. He has been involved in some of the site visits and so on. And we would likely use our SSEC membership to provide, for SSEC to provide some consult on our program. So they would help us to build the program ourselves over time through more of a consult model, rather than having an SSEC program within our school. And this obviously has been discussed with our new Executive Director, Christine Panerisi, and she has experience overseeing therapeutic programs, has homegrown built them herself as well. And again, Greg has experience as well. In his past district, he did work actually with our new Executive Director, Christine Panerisi, and they have a strong partnership on building therapeutic programs.
The goal for the program would be more than three to four students?
It would be, yes. But for the first year, that, we felt that that was a manageable size to begin to build a cohort. With an eye down the road, again, we do have a mechanism to perhaps tuition in students from other districts in order to grow our program. We've discussed over the course of budget season, one of the challenges in offering specialized programming in district is we have uneven cohort sizes over time. And so this will allow us to build our capacity on a smaller basis with the intention of growing that program. And again, eight students would be the max that we would have in the program. But in the short term, having a smaller program in district was the approach that we thought would make the most sense for us at this moment in time.
So it would be Hingham Public Schools staff, including OT, PT, BCBA, lead?
Yes.
And then the consult model would be through?
SSE.
SSE. So what type of, their consult would be on a monthly base or, or as needed, is how would that, how would the consult work?
Roughly, roughly monthly, again, that is something that we would, yeah. Greg, do you want to join up, join us at the, you could, yeah, join us right up here?
You get to pick.
Yeah.
Come on up.
I just don't show up.
So what was the question again, and now I can answer it?
Oh, how does, just maybe explain with how the consult...
Yeah, so normally the consult model works is like, once a month, you sort of go over your caseload, and you sort of say, here are the way that we're dealing with this behavior, here are the way that we're dealing with this student, what do you suggest for this, like, as we're moving forward, how do we want to start integrating this student into a classroom? And then some more, some of the more higher cases that we may have, maybe like, we have to do bi-weekly or something like that while we're beginning to learn the student and understand them. Dr. Panerisi and I have worked together in the Therapeutic Learning Center, or Community can be, the C can be called multiple places when we were in Boston Public together. So we do have a partnership together already there, and we've worked together in that capacity. So we already have a working relationship in order to like, build and move that forward.
What else in the committee have questions?
Do we, I guess, do we have, I guess Plymouth River in District, the right kinds of service providers, given this is a higher level of need, the students that would go into a program like this? Do we have them existing, or would we be contracting with the collaborative to pull them in for certain things, or?
So that one, I'd have to talk to Dr. Panerisi a little bit more, but I know, like, a special educator for the room, we have highly qualified special educators that we can definitely serve that room. Paraeducators for that room, we have highly qualified paraeducators. It would be more looking at getting a, like a halftime BCBA or a Behavior Tech to be part of the program, so we have someone on-site to be helping with those students.
I was asking more about those specialized skills, like, I guess, of course, their teachers and paras are...
Yep. So our, with PRS being smaller, we do have smaller caseloads in for speech, for OT, for PT, and those sort of specialized pieces. So we would be able to support that at this moment in time.
And I think I had mentioned earlier in the other, one of our most successful pilots this year was the Behavior Techs. And so the Behavior Techs would come with their students to Plymouth River, to the program.
Great.
Just wondering if the pilot is successful and the goal is to grow it to eight students, would that still be one room? Would you have enough space longer-term?
So longer-term, we'd have enough room to do, so, the answer is yes and no. We would have enough room to put another, where we're placing it in Plymouth River, we will have a room next door that we have thoughtfully, I've thoughtfully thought about and talked with Dr. Panerisi about, that in case there is anything, that we have to reverse evacuate the room, we have this room, which is also our TMI, TRI room. So it was, it's a multipurpose space, but if we have to go into two rooms, then we would use those two rooms, and if, that would then cause some trickle-down effects. It will, it is strategically having us schedule our, two of our specialists to share one room while one is teaching, one is not, in order to make all the pieces work, but we can do it.
And to answer maybe a related question is, our intention actually would be to grow this up to the middle school over time. So begin by building an elementary cohort, and as, that would be a multi-year plan with an eye to building a middle school program. So, but it seemed to make sense to begin with the elementary cohort, do what we can to support students in district, and then hopefully build that up through the middle school.
Yeah, and right now we're looking at three to five. So not K to five, it's three to, third to fifth.
Third. Matt?
Yep, so just a couple of questions. The, so short-term budget implications, like next year, is this budget neutral?
At this point, we are looking to reallocate existing staff. Again, in case, the Behavior Tech would move with the students and so on. And so given, again, the smaller caseloads that we have at Plymouth River, our intent is to make this budget neutral, and again, with an eye to serving as many students in district as we can, rather than out-of-district placements, so.
And then longer-term, if you were to grow to, so I get that ideally you're reducing costs of sending people out of district, but if we were to grow to eight and have it at both elementary and middle school, I would imagine that likely isn't just leveraging existing staff. Have we, have we thought through that sort of longer-term, what that would look like?
I think it's going to be difficult to project. Again, the cohorts are so variable from year to year. It is not something that you can count on, children are variable. And so we do not count on a certain number of students requiring this service each year. And so we find that in all of our specialized programs, that the cohort sizes will expand and contract over time just due to the variability of the children that we have in front of us. And so it makes it very difficult to project, particularly for the elementary program. We'd be trying to project for children we have not yet met, who have not joined our program yet, so.
Okay, that makes sense.
And the goal is to also keep our out-of-district costs down as well, too? So hopefully, in terms of reallocations, we'll have those buckets that we potentially could use in terms of that as well.
So the thought is, this likely would be, sort of, if we look at the next five, I'm just trying to think, because like, there's a lot of benefit of this, obviously, and it might be all for the students, certainly. And sometimes benefit comes with a cost. It sounds like our anticipation is this benefit actually would likely have a reduced cost? Is that what we're saying? We don't know for sure, there's a lot of variability, but like, is, I'm just sort of trying to get a sense of, do we think it would likely be more or less, or overall? I don't know.
Certainly, again, the goal is free and appropriate education, and to the extent that we can serve children in district, that is the primary driver in terms of the economic piece of it. Certainly having students within district would be a more economical option, given that we do have bandwidth for some of our service providers, given some of the lower enrollment numbers that we have currently at Plymouth River. The middle school, we would need to do some similar calculations. I do think, you know, in the short term, our focus is really on doing the elementary program well, learn from that, and that is something we did as part of this program development, visited a number of areas, schools, including Marshfield, Situate, about a half a dozen schools that we visited, and it took them many years. So this is, we're really looking at a five to seven-year plan of building this. And each of the programs were very honest that it took, it was a very iterative process. So they started small, looked at the skills and capacity that needed to be built, called in consultants as needed, and continue to evolve and grow their programs now. And very grateful, Situate and Marshfield in particular, very generous with their time, very generous with their materials that they have used, some of their handbooks and so on, that they've developed over time. So, so again, I do think there is wisdom in starting small, leveraging some of the talent that we do have. Again, some of our educators have experience in past districts, working with students in therapeutic settings, so leveraging some of the skills and talents that we have. And again, very grateful that we're onboarding a new Executive Director who has this expertise and has actually built in-district programs in this way that we're proposing, starting small and building up over time, so.
That makes sense. Hey, just one other question. Sort of selection of, or who would be placed into, or how would that process work? And then relatedly, is there a scenario that we try the pilot and are like, ooh, that didn't work? At all, I mean, it goes worse than challenges, and then what happens to those, like, is there any sort of negative for those students that have been in a program for one year and then we potentially don't have it the following year? Maybe, maybe not, it is my own lack of knowledge.
I would say that students in therapeutic settings, it's often a fluid, fluid dynamic anyway. And again, for students in a therapeutic setting, often the goal is to integrate them over time back into the most inclusive setting that we can. And so Greg, I'd also like you to chime in on that.
Yeah, I mean, so we would also be looking at, what is a clear criteria to have the students come in? Have you done an FBA with this student? So functional behavior analysis of the student. What are they coming with? What, what sort of services do they have? Are we able to meet those needs? And it's not, so the way that we did it in Boston, just to compare it, is we had sort of stopgaps along the way to make sure that we were, we didn't just become a dumping ground, that someone just said, oh, I can't handle this student, you take them, right? So we made sure that there are procedures and policies in place in order to make sure that the students that we were getting, we would be able to provide them with the best support and the best education that they were going to get. And if we knew that we could not do, meet their needs because they were too high, we would also, we would have those abilities to say, that's not going to meet, we're not going to be able to meet their needs, we have to think about where else to place them. But also, it gives us the ability to also say to some, some places, that just go, we can't handle this kid, like, now they're yours. So it works in, it works in both ways. So it protects the students in multiple ways, but Christine and I have, over the years and the past, have built in, like, have you done this yet? Have you done this yet? We're going to go do, we're going to go take a look at the student, we're going to see what that profile looks like to make sure that we're accepting the right students, to make sure that we're appropriately accepting the right kids.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense. Thank you.
And to answer your question, Matt, about our messaging to families, so we have been very open with the CPAC Board and the CPAC along the way of the plans that we have been engaging in, and some of the research that we've done. And they were very aware of the conversations we had with the SSEC when we were originally considering that model. And so families have been apprised of our evolving thinking on it, and we were very transparent about the research that we were doing in the hopes of building an elementary indoor middle school program. So, so I think it'll be exciting, and very grateful for Greg and Christine and their leadership. And again, it will, we're talking about a five to seven-year plan to really grow a robust program, but hopeful that this will be an important first step in building our in-district programming.
I think we've been talking, I feel like we've been hearing about this for a while, talking about it, and I think it's exciting to see it starting.
Yeah, I'm not going to beat the dead horse. I'm obviously very friendly to this. I've worked in a therapeutic school and have my entire career. I think looking at the most, you know, out-of-control thing that we're spending money on is out-of-district placements that we have, by out-of-control, I mean that we have the least amount of control over. So I think this is a way to really show a good faith effort in that, even if we take the personalities out of it. But throwing those back in, like, this is a time when these are kids who would be separated from their peers, from their town, from their, and if you're doing that at this age, that's, will be a relationship that's severed that they're not going to get back. And I think it's really crucial, especially for this age group, that we keep them in district. And, and I guess just one thing, it's not really a concern, but one sort of downside of starting with such a small cohort is so much of the therapeutic work that you do, which Greg knows, but is in the community that you build and the relationships that you develop, not just between staff and students, but with the students themselves. And so it's, will present a big challenge to create that community with only three or four students. Then the way will, would be easier if it was a larger pilot.
Agreed. And again, our hope is to be as inclusive as possible, and as students are able to be included in the gen ed setting, whether that be specialists and so on, that will, that will be a goal, to ensure that students are having that, the social time and connection with the school and community, so.
And this is a cohort that's not shrinking in Hingham. This is, you know, we are in a mental health crisis, we've seen, we have data to back that up with... We've seen, we have data to back that up with the youth risk behavior survey and lots of other data points that we have in Hingham. So this is not, this isn't going away. This isn't a trendy, you know, I'll stop talking.
Thank you, Tim.
Does anyone else have any more questions?
I'd like to thank you for stepping up and leading this initiative.
No problem.
Your expertise will really help some kids, I'm sure. The fact that you're a principal that is offering the little extra space or bandwidth you have for the better, greater good of the entire community is greatly appreciated, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can sit up there.
All right, moving on to eight point five.
Yes, and so we have had, as I said, a very busy week.
Good night.
Thank you, Tara, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
As of 2:00 PM on Friday, we had our, our bid opening for the turf installation contract. And with that said, I will pass it over to our business director to talk you through the process that we went through and where we landed.
Thank you, Katie. In terms of the turf, the turf, the turf installation, the turf project as a whole, as you are all aware, during town meeting this year, we got approval for $880,000 to be used on the turf replacement. One of the things that we, we established a working group, which included the facilities director, the athletic director, the rec department director, the designer for the turf and myself, where we've, since approval at town meeting, we've been meeting on a weekly basis to review information about the turf and make decisions in terms of next steps on how we should approach the turf project. Just one of our key concerns has been trying to make sure that we can deliver the turf to students before the start of school. And from the information that we gathered, we learned that, that if, in the manufacturing process, it can take a, it can, if we, if we're not up ahead in the schedule for the turf manufacture, it could delay the project overall. As you're aware of, it takes about two to three weeks to get bids out. And to the process allow, you have to keep the bids out for about two weeks before you can actually make a decision. So one of the things that we decided to do was to separate the manufacturer purchase of the turf and installation of the turf into two separate components of the project. We used a collective supply, a collective approach from a collective source, some source well to be able to get the turf material. We decided, based on reviews and information that we had obtained as a group, to move forward with Shaw. And what we've done is that we've placed the, the purchase order with Shaw. And we worked with scientists, the scientists that we used at town meeting to come up with the, the testing protocol as well. And we had that run by John Coughlin in terms of the structure of the testing and, and, and the, and the process for the agreement between the manufacturer and ourselves. So that we've final, almost finalized with John Coughlin now. And we have sent, submitted the initial testing protocol to the manufacturer for, for review and comments. And then we're hoping to finalize at least that part one of that project. The second part of the project, as we mentioned, is the installation. And we created the bid documents to get the designer. We had it on our website for two weeks, as well as of all the different areas that we needed to post it. And on Friday, as, as Ms. Roberts indicated, we opened the bid and we were able to get the results from the bid in terms of those, the bid. And we were able to get a, choose a vendor who would install the turf. And the price that we got was actually a little bit below what we had expected. And we were able to, based on the two vendors who submitted bids, the lowest bid was actually Rad Sports, who initially, who was a Hingham family. And they were actually involved in the initial construction of the turf back of ten, more, ten or 12 years ago. So this, what we just ask of you right now is just to, as part of your policies, you were supposed to bring this, our bid results to you and ask that you approve us moving forward with Rad as the installation and site preparer for the turf. And we need your approval on that. And then to also give Dr., Ms. Ada, Ms., sorry, what am I saying? Ms. Roberts, the, the ability to sign off on the contract. The final contract is actually a template contract that we've used with, with the town, shared with the town before. And we'll run it again through John Coughlin tomorrow as well to make sure that everything is in place. And that will be shared with, with the vendor once you have approved it.
No, I, I just want to say a couple of things first. I really appreciate how you guys have been working on this since, I think, the, the next day since town meeting.
Right.
Especially with the testing protocols.
Yeah.
Those, make sure you have those, the three tests that you had set at town meeting, sure that you're going to do, and you've been diligent to do that. And, and the contract that is in our packet is, that's just for the installation, correct? And that, because you did break it up into two.
Right.
I didn't understand that at first, but now I understand that. So I just, I really appreciate how you guys have been so thoughtful through this process.
Yeah.
And then I'll just ask if there's anyone on the committee that has any questions.
I just have a question about, are we voting to award the contract? Or are we voting to give Dr. Roberts the ability to sign the contract? It's confusing, we're both, okay?
Yes, sorry.
Is that two votes, or is that one vote?
It can be one.
Okay. I was just confused by the wording on.
I'm sorry.
No. I didn't know what we were voting on.
Ayesha hopefully wrote out the exact motion.
Perfect, okay.
I always love when you do that.
Can I ask just two quick questions that I, I know I'll get? So just, that's not about the actual specific contract, but related. So timing, sort of best-case scenario of this being completed, like new turf installed is when?
So we, as part of the, the installation bid, we gave a deadline for it to be done by September 1st. Actually, two weeks, a week before September 1st, actually. Just in time for school, as the, the latest date when the turf can be ready. And that was part of the, the bid instructions, that, that had to be followed as well.
Okay.
And part of, sorry.
That might impact summer training and perhaps tryouts, but not the regular season play.
Yeah.
And if there, I mean, I looked at the, like, referral or recommendations, whatever it was, and it looks like they were always on time or ahead of time.
Right.
If they were late, like, and we had to go into the season, I mean, are, we already, I'm sure, Jim Quatrimoni's thinking about a backup plan in terms of where we would house some of the games?
Yes.
Yeah, and I know, I know he's, at least for the summer, through the camps and the, and the tryouts, he's been speaking with all the coaches and kind of just letting them be aware. I don't want to speak for him, but he's definitely been speaking with everyone to let them know what's going on, the possibility of this, that. And then I don't know what his plan is for. After September 1st, I think we're all being optimistic that
Yeah.
the timeline is going to happen.
Right, and part of us actually separating the, the bids into two was also to try to make sure that we could get ahead of production as well, and also the testing that has to occur. So that by the time the, the bid is awarded, once you approve, we hope to have that bid awarded this week. And then, once school is done, there will be demolition, and that process takes a little bit of time, too. So that will happen in terms of tearing off the turf of the fields and everything else. And in that time, we can get all the testing done and make sure that by the time that part of the, early part of the project is done, we can actually have the turf ready for installation.
And then, separate but related question as well. So what if the testing fails? Like, what?
So we.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully it doesn't. But like, I guess I just don't really understand, what does that mean? Like, we have to go to a totally different vendor? Or we're like, hey, you messed up this?
So the Shaw product that we will be purchasing has been previously tested by other districts
Okay.
and came in well below EPA levels. So our assumption is they have promised they have not changed the products that are going in, their extruding agents have not changed. And so we can make, I think, very reasonable assumptions that the.
I think this would be extra.
We're being extra, yeah. So we are not relying on the testing done by other districts. And again, doing due diligence to redo it. But again, the firm has indicated they have not changed the product that they, the, the raw materials that they're using to create the turf. And nothing about the manufacturing process has changed since the last round of turf testing was done. So we're very confident that it will be below the EPA levels. And it was well below EPA levels before.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Anyone online? Don't see anybody? All right, with that, we will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for site preparation and installation of the Hingham High School turf to R A D Sports for the amount of $336,125 and authorize the superintendent to execute that contract on behalf of the school committee.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to approved grants and donations.
Yes, we have two grants and donations, one of which is hot off the presses as of 5:00 PM this evening. So that was a late addition to the folder this evening. And so the first grant that we would like to bring to the committee is the DESI Civics Teaching and Learning Grant Award. And so we were recently awarded $13,260 to support some of our civics education activities. It will allow us to continue funding the mock town meeting program for all grade three students. It will also support our continued partnership with Generation Citizen, which is a nonprofit organization that provides curriculum and professional development to support student-led action civics. And finally, the grant will allow us to continue to facilitate our civics-related programming, including our HMS Civics Project Showcase.
That's good. Any questions? Comments? Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the fiscal year 26 civics teaching and learning grant in the amount of $13,260.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Great, the next grant is the very late-breaking one. As of 5:06 this evening, we received a grant award letter from the Hingham Education Foundation in which they will be awarding the district an additional $70,000 to continue to support our Thinking Classrooms Initiative. So this Thinking Classrooms Initiative is designed to encourage active participation, critical thinking, and, and problem-solving in secondary mathematics classrooms. During the 24, 25 school year, HAF generously funded professional development on the Thinking Classrooms pedagogy for all secondary mathematics educators and built out two fully furnished Thinking Classrooms at the Hingham High School to serve as a pilot. For our next year, year two of Thinking Classrooms, HAF will be building out three eighth-grade classrooms at the middle school. And will, has indicated they hope to continue to support the growth of this over time. So I'm very grateful to HAF.
Very generous, thank you. All right, any questions? All right, take a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the very generous $70,000 grant from the Hingham Education Foundation to support the Thinking Classroom program.
I will second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any post? All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along to surplus? Any surplus?
No.
Nope. All right, subcommittee project reports, I don't know if we have. Oh, that's right, Matt.
Yeah, so we had our, I just have one update. We had our special education subcommittee meeting last week, some point, one of those days. And there are two main topics. First, we got an update on the SPED strategic plan, so progress made in, in this year, which was a good, really helpful update. And then the second piece, we did talk about subcommittee for the next year. We had discussed this previously as a group. And the both CPAC chairs were there. And I would say the group agreed that it made sense to, to fold the special education subcommittee into, or not into, combine it, I guess.
Get devoured by.
Yes, exactly. With the educational programming. I, I think everyone thought that that made a lot of sense. It was helpful to have the data, I think, that, that other districts don't have a special education subcommittee. So I guess, I don't know if we all have to agree on that, but that the subcommittee and the CPAC chairs were in support.
No, I think, I think we kind of wanted their blessing before we.
Yeah, I think it'll, it'll go a long way towards kind of eliminating the styloing that kind of exists right now.
I think as long as we're talking about academics, we're talking about special ed as well, as a part of that.
Yep.
So.
All right.
And then to, just transitions beautifully into the educational programming subcommittee, which now includes aspects of the special, former special education subcommittee, will be meeting on July 10th.
June 10th?
Ju, July 10th.
July 10th, oh.
Not June. We're meeting, we're meeting later so that we have, or can get a fully robust end-of-year data, look at the end-of-year data. So we are, it will be over the summer. But I think meeting during the school year didn't give us the opportunity to really get that data presented before then. So that's why we're meeting so late. But yeah, hoping to get a nice, fresh, new crowd at that meeting in July, when everyone's starved for committee work. Desperate to go to meetings over the summer.
Yeah, get a full house. Bring snacks.
Salary negotiations is meeting on June 10th.
No conflict.
Yeah, exactly.
PRS had their last school council meeting of the year, and I am sadly handing it over to Jen and moving on to Self for next year. And then Katie mentioned the mock town meeting for the third grade. I did pass along an invite via email from Bev Vernon. If you didn't receive it, let me know. If you do plan to attend on the ninth or 10th, if you could just respond to Bev and let her know so she makes sure you have a chair up in front with the other elected officials, and let me know, because she dropped off a bunch of the warrants. So I'll get them to you ahead so you can read them. It's great.
Uh, no, I don't have any.
All I have is, there are warrants in the packet. You'll notice a new format. I will personally thank Sheri, who's doing some more scanning to put these in the packets. Instead of me writing out the categories with Ayesha's blessing, we are putting the summary pages into the packet. Because I was realizing all I was doing was just rewriting the categories over and over again. So here's a little bit more data. And again, thank you to Sheri for scanning them. That's it, so those are in the packet. And I think that's all we have. Any other items? Our 48, 24 hours, 48 hours, we do not have anything. Our next school committee meeting will be June 16th in two weeks at 6:30. And then we take a nice little month break. And we will meet again on July 21st, after that at 6:30. And then, so just moving on to item 11, which is to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session. I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, session, pursuant to Master of Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, for the purposes of 11.1 to approve minutes of the executive session held on May 19th, 2025, and 11.2 to conduct strategy session with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, the public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and if the chair so declares.
I so declare.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call vote? All those in favor, roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tim? Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thanks.